Good evening, everybody. It is the 11th of March at 6:00 PM. This is the town of Rockback regular town board meeting. Would everybody please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, under God, and just as a whole. Before we start, I just wanted to announce that Roger Newperk, who was our beloved, very dedicated, and very kind dog control officer, passed away last week. He spent over 30 years as our dog warden, and he loved dogs and took really good care of the dogs in the town. He will be greatly missed by all of us. His services are Wednesday with Daps and Chestney, and our thoughts are with Roger's family. He's a very, very sweet and cunning man. I'm trying to speak into the microphone. Erin's leaving early tonight, so I'm going to take -- she has a work trip. I'm going to take a few things out of order, but I'd like to start with a -- We have a motion for approval of prior minutes of February 12th for our regular town board meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. Second, thank you, Chauncey. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I would just like to announce that the Conservation Advisory Board, the Planning Board have vacancies. The board assessment review has been filled up, I believe. Tax bills were due by the last day in February, the 29th this year, before penalty. They're now due at the end of March with a 2% penalty. So please see the clerk if you haven't paid. I'm going to remind everybody, and we're going to be talking about this later, that all dogs must be leashed in the town and especially in the park. We're having an increasing amount of incidents in the park with unleashed dogs. And a reminder to everyone to please check with the building department if you're doing any work, any renovations on your house or any buildings on your property, because you probably need a building permit. We have two public hearings opened, a continuation of our local law noise ordinance, and our referendum for a four-year supervisor and highway superintendent term. We substantially changed the noise ordinance, so I believe we're going to hold that public hearing open until the 25th of March at 6:00 PM. But where do I go from here? Do I need to bring anything up for the public hearing? We're not taking comments on the public hearing tonight. We just published the new law.
Yeah.
I guess we could take questions, if anybody has any, but there will be a public hearing on the 25th.
We do have a resolution to set for that, 2069.
I'd like a motion for Tab 2, 2024-169, scheduling a public hearing for the amended noise law, local law, which will be March 25th at 6:00 PM. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Any discussion or?
Just for public information, we took the comments that we received from the last public hearing and made certain amendments to the law to address those comments. And I think we successfully have addressed all the pertinent comments that we received from the last meeting.
Please read them.
Unless somebody has any questions, we'll throw comments at the next public hearing.
We took -- we listed, we heard, any noise having to do with emergencies, snow plowing, or home generators, or trees needing to be cut down. Any weather emergencies are exempt. Any agricultural activities are exempt. Again, this is a revision of an existing law that is challenging. So please read and come to the 25th with questions and comments. We do have a public hearing on local law to be decided of 2024 for a referendum. This is a mandatory referendum for a four-year term for the supervisor and the highway superintendent. This will be on the ballot for your vote. So we're happy to take comments, but it won't be passed unless it's voted for by the citizens of Rockback. So there is a public hearing open. Would anybody like to speak? Please come up and speak.
Hi, my name is Shirley Stone, and I'm just curious. What are the benefits to taxpayers by doing this referendum?
Well, the supervisor and the highway superintendent are the only two elected officials who run every two years. Some people say that, you know, a lot of time is spent campaigning, and it's time they could be spent working. It's parity for the other elected positions, and it seems to be what most of the towns are -- have done.
So I'm just curious about the timing. Why is this coming up now versus years ago?
I can't speak for why it's coming -- it didn't come up years ago. I'm at the end of my days, so it's something, you know, I would like to pass on to whoever runs after me. Not that I'm saying I'm definitely not running again, but I can see light at the end of the tunnel. It takes a lot of energy to do this job, and it takes an enormous amount of energy to run a campaign and do this job.
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Interrupting anybody who wants to ask a question?
Well, I'll decide that, but.
Oh, okay. Just trying to be courteous. So what about introducing the idea of term limits, like with the President of the United States? Has that ever come up?
I don't know that we can do that. I don't know that we're -- I don't know that that's a law, by general municipal law.
Oh.
And here we have almost no one running. We don't have.
No, I know, but I -- one of the reasons isn't so hard to be an incumbent, and I thought if there were term limits, maybe it would, you know, incite younger people to consider running.
We're begging people to run. Excuse me, excuse me. Warren, excuse me. Can I have one conversation, please? You're talking into the microphone.
No. It was his fault.
Okay. It's perfectly fine. Yeah. It's hard to get people to run, so term limits might be a disaster, and I don't know that we can do it.
No supervisory.
Okay.
Other towns have been doing -- we did it in the town. I represent the town of Northeast. We did that to the town of Northeast.
What did you do?
Extended the four-year to supervise.
Right, that wasn't the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're passing that.
Yeah, I was just asking about term limits. That's all. If that's.
I don't think we have the power to do it. Do we, Warren? I don't think general municipal law does this for terms. I'll check on it.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard?
Where would we look, DuZito? Where would we look to understand the regulations and rules that you are operating under now?
Our town law is on the website. It's general municipal code. You can go to our town regulations. You could also Google "New York State General Municipal Law." That's all the laws that guide us.
So you're sort of operating under the state?
State tells the towns what the extent of our power is. Sure. Anybody else? If you hear nothing, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
All in favor?
No, we're going to continue the public hearing. This is on the term office, because we made a slight change to the local law because of the biennial election change. So we wanted to defer the continued public hearing until next year.
Okay. Do we have a resolution, Doc, Joanie? I'll make a motion from the floor for Resolution 2024-192 to schedule a public hearing for the mandatory referendum to extend the supervisor and the highway superintendent's terms for March 25th at 6:00 PM. Is that enough time, John?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
I made the motion. Chauncey seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. What is it, pass? Unanimously.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Just so you understand, I hope you probably understand, but the reason why we're adjourned is because I had to incorporate the new changes in Town Law Section 81, which now is going to be changing the elections from the biennial elections for towns from odd years to even years. So I had to amend the law to account for that.
Yeah, the state has decided that we will all be running on even years, which are major election years, to help bring turnout. So any four-year terms will run in 2025 for three years, and then in 2028 have to run again for a four-year term.
And that will save money because of the limited elections.
Well, I don't know that -- I don't know that.
Well, the odd years are going to go away.
I don't know that the legislature is doing it. I don't know. I don't know what else is.
So all boards meet up at the same time?
No. No. Local elections will now be on even years, not odd years. There will still be standard terms.
Except for town judge, which will stay.
There you go. So no. It won't save money, of course.
So would it?
Yes. Okay. I think while Warren is here, we also want to do -- oh, this is an important one. Motion for -- this is Tab 30. I need a motion for 2024-170 approving tie-in bonds to do a map plan and report for the -- looking at an extraterritorial water district. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. We've been asked by the village to look at forming five extraterritorial water districts. There are many people in the town who get their drinking water from the village. Right now, there is no way for the village to either bond or collect money from people for major infrastructure improvements. They can only believe for the water. There are people on Knollwood, there are people in the gardens on Rhine Cliff and River Road, and up on Mount Rutson, and then almost all of Rhine Cliff is on Village Road. If something catastrophic or even large were to happen to some of the infrastructure, the village would not be able to bond or tax the users to fix it. So they have asked us to create these water districts so that in the event some infrastructure repairs needed, they'd be able to handle it financially. This is something that we have committed to spending $12,500 on to have a plan drawn up to see what this would look like. And there's something that we will be talking about, but we believe it's in the best interest of people who get their water from the village to have assurances that if a main needs to be replaced, there's a financial way for the village to raise money to do it. Did I succinctly explain that, Warren?
Yeah. And the -- if the -- it'll be for five proposed districts. This is just a preliminary study. We have to go through a very complex formal process to pass that. So the districts may or may not be formed.
And the districts also get to vote on it. So there are five proposed districts. We will have to do outreach and education. People will have to weigh in on it. I don't know that it necessarily matters to us, other than I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that your water source is protected. But it's something ultimately that the water users will have to decide through a vote for each district. But we have committed to spending the money to do the first part of this plan, which is a map and plan.
And the money will come back to the town if the districts are formed.
And if not, we're happy. So it's an important study. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a roll call.
Oh, by roll call. Okay. Erin? Alan?
Aye.
Chauncey? Chad?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. It's unanimous. Thank you, Warren. I don't know that we have anything else here for Warren. Can somebody?
Short-term rental?
Sorry, what?
Short-term rental. You want me to state that?
Oh, you know, we could do that now. It's a discussion item. We have Tab 26. We have floated out our proposal for our short-term rental law, which we've been talking about, I think, since 2019, and we suspended it during COVID. It's in keeping with the village, with Red Hook, with New York City, with what many towns are doing. We have about, I don't know, 1,900 homes in Rhinebeck that are single-family or single-family with apartments or single-family with multiple residences that are -- would be eligible for this. Short-term rentals are currently not allowed in the town. They're illegal, so people who are renting them out are doing so illegally. This is something that the board would like to allow under very stringent circumstances. It has to be your primary residence. You must live there. It can't be your second home, so you can't own a vacation home and rent it out. You must be on premises, so you can have an apartment. You can have an accessory dwelling that is legal, or you can rent out rooms in your house. You'll have to register with the town. You'll have to have a fire inspection. You'll have to have no violations outstanding on the property. And you'll have to notify your neighbors and not cause noise or nuisance. Short-term rentals are a commercial use, and homes are residential property. We're trying to protect our housing stock and the quality of life for our residents. That's what the law is. We put it out so that people can read it and become familiar. And we will be scheduling a public hearing for this. We'll be laying it down formally at our next meeting on the 25th and schedule a public hearing then.
The only other important aspect is that for the Rhine Cliff district, in addition to the permitting requirement through the code enforcement officers, you would -- property owner would have to apply for a special use permit.
From the planning board. Because there's no zoning by right in Rhine Cliff. So you need to go to the planning board for everything in Rhine Cliff, and so you need to go to the planning board in Rhine Cliff and the hatlet overlay of Rhine Cliff for permission to do an Airbnb. So that will be coming up. And I -- any questions from anybody on that? Or be on our schedule, on our agenda at the next meeting?
So can we voice -- oh, I have to come up? Okay. I know you want to. Hi, I'm Vicki Boner. I live in a very small neighborhood, small street, three dead ends, a couple miles from town. There are 12 houses on my street since 2019. Three houses have sold, one next door to me, one behind me, and one catty corner across the street. They're all Airbnbs. They are all owned by residents of New Jersey or New York City. And it definitely has impacted my quality of life and those of my neighbors. So I completely, wholeheartedly support a regulation. The fact that it's illegal according to state law has no impact on the people who are doing this. So thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. And we'll take a comment during our public hearing. Anything else for Warren? Are you here for the water fountain upgrade? I'm just kidding.
Nothing about that. I think I'm done with this.
Thank you for coming, Warren. Extra -- we got the extraterritorial. Erin, while you're here, I think what I wanted to talk about, the shade seeding at the Thompson-Mazarelle Park. We have three beautiful green pickleball courts, and we have, as soon as we can find a vendor who will do the whole project, from start to finish. Thank you for going in. And we're realizing that there's the need for shaded seeding areas and green spaces within our park. And rather than do it willy-nilly, like things might have been done over the years, we thought it might be a good idea to consult with Frank Mazarello, the architect who built, designed for Gravis, our Trailhead Pavilion, and get him to start looking at how we could create areas within the park where people can congregate and have shade and be next to gardens. So pickleball being the first one there. Chad and I met with him last week. He's excited. We would pay him for this work. He would come up with a design that could be reproduced throughout the park and appropriately sized. And we would look to expand and redo our pollinator gardens. So it's just a discussion item, and I wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with that.
Also, you might want to talk about Steel United.
Yes. I'm talking about this first.
Why, I thought you were going to start.
Yeah? Everybody okay?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So that's what we'll do. We'll start working on that. Chad will work on it as the park liaison. Chauncey will have input on the pickleball courts. I'll keep my eye on it, and we'll roll it out to the park committee. Erin, I'd love for you to be involved, too. Let me come back to -- let's talk about dog leash laws while we're here. You know, we did lose Roger Newperk, who was a dedicated dog warden. We have a deputy dog warden. We are having increasing complaints at our park of dogs running off leashes. I'm not ready to say no dogs at the park. I'd like to keep trying. I'd have the police going down there, but we've had people being nipped at, people being jumped on, people being bitten. Dogs, the park is for people. We're happy for you to bring your dogs, but you've got to keep them on a leash. One thing that we looked at is that our dog leash laws have, I think, a $25 fine. It's in here. It's on Tab 21. Is that something we should look at upping so that when the police do ticket people, it might be more of a deterrent? And people are very aggressive. When, you know, our dog warden tells them to put them on a leash, people are becoming very aggressive. So I am having the police do more of this. Currently, uh... Currently, I think they're $25, and I think we should up it. I don't know what you guys think.
How can we follow through on, like, if the police aren't present and it happens?
We can't. They're an enforcement arm. We can't. I don't enforce the law. You don't enforce the law. We're legislators. We can put signs up. We can try this. We can have more police patrol. We can have higher fines. And if people don't want to do it, we can talk about banning dogs from the park, which would be a shame, but people are getting bitten.
But increasing the rate and imposing it as a deterrent to the people?
I'm sorry, Erin?
Raising the fine fee and imposing it as a deterrent to people?
Yeah. Yeah. Is that something we're interested in pursuing?
I think it's a simple and straightforward measure to have an impact without having to do as much in terms of enforcement. People will self-enforce by posting of that number. And that will help remind them that they'll pay a price if they don't, if they choose not to participate in that process.
Any comment from the public? Any input? Yep. Hello?
Hi.
Could you please come up and introduce yourself?
Hi, Karen Murphy. I'm a dog owner. I wasn't aware this was on the agenda, but I just am curious. How many people have been bitten, say, in the last year?
Half a dozen or so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And we're increasingly finding dogs on our artificial turf field defecating because the gates are sometimes left open, and the dogs run off their leashes and deprecate on our field.
Yeah, I have more problem with the litter than I see the people there leaving stuff. But would it be possible to actually have an area -- it doesn't have to be that park, but somewhere where the dogs can be off-leash?
Yeah, there is a dog park on our Stone Church Field in the town of Red Hook that's owned by Rhine Beck, and Robert McKean has been updating it like crazy. And our highway department is going to go in and hatch the parking lot soon. So there is a dog run there where dogs can run off-leash.
And who monitors that?
It's run by the town of Red Hook.
Okay. So I had a puppy. He was 14 weeks old at the time last year. That I did bring him there, and he ingested somebody's pot. And I had to spend thousands of dollars at the vet, not knowing that's what he got, you know, exposed to. So that particular area I would go to. I'm just wondering if there's anywhere that's off-leash, other than that place.
No, there's no off-leash in the town of Rhine Beck. Your backyard.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Okay. Anybody else? Emma. Emma and I, Emma's our CEP Environmental Coordinator. I are working on a grant for the Hudson Valley Regional Association to look at methane mitigation at our landfill. And the Hudson Valley Regional Association is working with us all to put the grants together and then go out and get money from the feds and the state. So it would be methane mitigation as well as a feasible study for community solar, which we informally did there before. But part of the grant money would go to, and this is why we couldn't do community solar on our landfill. There was no connectivity there to feed back into the grid. So that's what the grant would be for as well. I just wanted to let you all know that I'm working on it, and I'd like to send in a letter of attention. It will be non-binding, but it will allow us to start, you know, looking at what a feasibility study would look at and how we'd be able to get this grant money. Just wanted to see if that was something you all were interested in. Why not? I think that's our discussion items. I would like to make a motion for -- this is -- we're going back to our order here. Tab 4, 2024 -- I need a motion for 2024-171 turf field soccer camp rental from Steel United. May I have a motion? Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Erin. Steel United is a national for-profit company. They bought Dutch Elite, which was locally owned by a dad with kids in Hyde Park or Rhine Beck. But they're going to be running a soccer camp on our field. And we have been asked to give it to them for a very discounted rate. I believe soccer fields in the area are going for $2 to $2.75 an hour, with preferential rates going to people who rent out large blocks of times around $1.50 an hour. Last year, we didn't charge money for our field rental. We're not looking to monetize it. We're only looking to raise enough money for a capital project to replace the carpet or the surface, what it needs replacing in 10 to 14 years. So we'd like to collect around $30,000 a year, so it's not a taxpayer burden. We see this more as, you know, something for our kids and soccer players to use that we've provided. And I just wanted to make sure you're all comfortable with the rental price that we're giving them, and we can go back next year and renegotiate.
Which we should do.
We're giving them a special low price. Erin, you're our rec expert. You want to stick with it this -- I mean, Chad and I are meeting with them next week, too, about -- Are you comfortable with this, I think, is what I'm asking?
I mean, we just -- am I correct in saying it was adjusted twice?
Uh, no. It had -- I don't remember what they paid last year. They're paying -- Dutch Elite had it last year. They were local. They sold to this national chain. We're giving it to them for $60 an hour. We don't know how big the camp will be or how many. It's for local kids. It's six weeks. It's, I think, nine to three. And it gets everybody out on the field playing. It's a good thing. I think we'll make almost $11,000 in rental with what we get from Rhine Beck Soccer League and some tournaments will be closed. and some tournaments. We'll be close to saving what we need to save a year. And next year, we could look at going up. I don't, I don't want to be taken advantage of by a large corporation, but I also don't want to, I just wanted to see what your thoughts were.
I think that if we've said that that's how much we'll rent it for, then next year we can look back.
Okay, everybody comfortable with that? Did we make, oh, we made a motion to have, all right, so we have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for tab five, 2024-172, the recreation fee schedule. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Alan, thanks. Tronc, I'll take you as a second. Any comments or questions? Basically, residents are paying 50% more than non-residents. We don't have a lot of non-residents coming, but we still try and keep prices low so everybody can enjoy the pool.
You set it backwards. Non-residents are paying 50% more than residents.
Okay, non-residents pay more than residents. We still want to keep it affordable. Sorry. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for 2024-173 for removable bollards for the recreation park. I become enamored with the word "bollards." May I have a motion? Chad, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or concerns? We had a car drive on our field through the emergency gates. A bollard is a steel pole that goes into the ground, and it's removable with a lock. So we can leave the gate open, and cars won't be able to drive on and do damage to our field. Okay, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for tab seven, 2024-174, for town clerks to attend the conference and close town hall while the clerks are at conference.
Motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
This is for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, April 22nd to April 24th. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So town hall clerk's office will be closed those days. We'll give advance notice and put a sign on the door. The rest of the departments will be. I need a motion for 2024-175 upgrading our firewall hardware and fiber optic internet.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Alan, take it away.
So currently, the town is hooked to the internet via a cable connection that Spectrum provides, but moving to fiber. What will happen is the performance will just about double for downloads to almost a megabyte, megabit per second. The upload speed on cable is very low. This will make the upload speed also a megabit per second. In order to do that, we need a new firewall hardware, which is in this motion. And as part of the deal, because fiber is more reliable than the current cable-based internet, the police department for the village is going to get on the network as well, which will mean that we'll share the cost with the village. Instead of today, it's one third, two thirds, it'll be 50/50. If you look at the, there's a chart in here that shows what the different cost breakdown is. But basically, for about $1,000 extra in a year, cost to the town will be able to upgrade to high-speed internet, more reliable, get the police department on board, and so on, because the village will be paying a higher share of the cost. And, and because we'll have a reliable internet connection, we'll be able to do a cheaper way to hook up our telephone system. Right now, we're paying about $100 a line per month to Spectrum for the 10 lines or so that are, 10 telephone lines that are in town hall. I think we can get that down to almost $10 a month. So a lot of big savings once you get the internet working, which is, that's the next step in the project.
Any other questions? Thanks for doing this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'd like to table the water fountain purchase for the recreation park only because what we budgeted, price went up. What we budgeted for is no longer available. We wanted a water fountain bottle filler and a dog bowl drinking fountain. So we have to go back to the drawing board and identify one and transfer the money. So I'd like to table this until the next meeting, if that's okay. I need a motion for tab 10, 2024-177, to appoint Leslie Hill to a, to a, a seat on the Board of Assessment Review. It's a partial seat. Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Erin. Again, someone resigned, and we have a seat open through 2026. The Chair of the Board of Assessment Review has met with Leslie Hill and thinks she would be a good addition. She has served as an appraiser, real estate appraiser. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thanks. Joni, could you please get this resolution and the one appointing Gina to Cathy in Poughkeepsie County? Thank you. I need a motion for 2024-178 to advertise for seasonal maintenance department laborer. Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tronc. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024-179, spring planting trees at the cemetery from the Friends of the Cemetery. Thank you, Erin. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions or comments? I know Suzanne is here, but this is an annual tree planting or biannual tree planting that the Friends of the Cemetery do. They really do a lot of nice work for the cemetery. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024-180, tab 13, to hire a temporary data entry clerk for the cemetery. It's, no, go ahead. Just need a motion and a second. I'll take Alan and then Erin first. I don't know. No, I just took mine for a second. Kat Coon's been working on this project. It's covered by a grant. She's digitizing all of our information on index cards. So it's a good thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Need a motion for Resolution 2024-181, tab 14, to take our cemetery truck out to option. Thank you, Tronc. Thank you, Alan. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024-182 for our cemetery natural burial markers.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. A lot going on at the cemetery. I need a motion for 2024-183 to advertise for our part-time seasonal laborer for the cemetery.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Erin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Tab 17, 2024, 2024-184, establishing the Historic Preservation Award. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Tronc. You may have a second. Thank you, Alan. All in, any questions, comments, concerns? This is our H-PAC, Historic and Archaeological Preservation Committee, and they're proposing that they start giving an annual award to property owners who do a good job of a historic preservation project. The town recognizes it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024-185 to hire a historic preservation consultant. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Tronc. You may have a second. Thank you, Alan. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'll make a motion for 2024-186 for the CEC Cathy Grant Funding Award application. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? This is the grants that we received totaling $15,000 in total for our Kind and Smart Community. And Cathy stuff that we're going to put towards an electric vehicle for town employees, specifically our zoning enforcement officer. And you're authorizing me a letter to get the money. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for 2024-187 to purchase a coffee machine for the downstairs offices. Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tronc. Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024-188 to extend our AUD filing. That's our annual update filing with the state.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will make the motion for 2024-189, 2024-190, and 2024-191, our preliminary accounts, abstracts, payables, our capital project abstracts, and our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second on all three resolutions?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We've done all of our discussion items. The regional council has needed a short-term rental leash law. Any public comment? A lot of people here. Anybody want to talk about anything? Yes.
2024-196, you have received or you are applying to?
We have received, and this is the money, like, this is the letter for me to get the money, authorize and sign the attached letters of commitment for the grant monies offer. We had to tell them what we were using it for.
And what are you using?
And what I just said, an electric vehicle for the zoning department.
An electric vehicle for the zoning department.
Yeah. Other people, other town people can use, other town employees can use it. It will be, I believe, a white car with a hatchback. I think it's a Hyundai. And it would be for our zoning enforcement officer to go out and inspect, pick up signs. Our clerks need to go down to Poughkeepsie and pick up taxes. It will be a town of Reinbeck electric car for staff use, mainly the zoning department. Sure. Anybody else? Sure.
Going back to the short-term rentals, I believe you said there were 19, 1,900 homes that could apply.
Around 2,000.
Okay. Are you putting a cap on how many will be allowed of that number?
We haven't discussed that. Right now, we have about 80. We don't know how many are owned by second homeowners and how many are owned by Reinbeck residents. What we want to do is protect our housing stock and not allow commercial use of residential properties. I don't think we discussed a cap. We'll see, we'll see how it goes. We just don't want people living next door to hotels on, on, you know. It's not, you don't buy a house to live next door to someone who's renting it out every week. That's what we want to see stop. Let me see if anyone else has a question first. Yes.
Hi.
Did you state your name?
Melissa Schultz.
Oh, hi.
I'm Melissa.
I didn't recognize you.
I know you.
Hi, neighbor.
I want to better understand what is happening with the, when will a decision made about the short-term rental situation? And I also, as an Airbnb owner and a permanent resident of Reinbeck and a contributing member to society here in Reinbeck, I also want to say that Airbnbs bring a lot of tourism dollars to our beautiful shops and restaurants. We have never had a guest, problematic guest, in two years that we have been renting our house out on weekends. But I better, my big question is to better understand what the process is. Is it a done deal?
It's a local law. We are going to lay it down before the town board on the 25th. We will hold a public hearing, and then we will vote. We have been looking to do this for four years. We suspended it while we were going through COVID. There are more hotels coming to the area. Houses aren't meant to be commercialized. They're meant for residents. You can rent out your house if you're living there. If you have an accessory dwelling and you're there, you can rent it out. You can rent it out for over a month, but you can't rent it out for a weekend. No, even if you're, if you're there, you can do whatever you want. And if it's your primary residence, you can do whatever you want. If you have two houses that are on separate properties right next to each other, you can't rent the second one out. You would have to, you would have to, what's the word?
Merge the properties.
Yeah, that's not the word. What's the word? What? Lot-line adjustment, yeah.
Yeah.
You mentioned the word "process" when, it's not on the website at the moment, is it?
Yes, it is. It's, the draft law has been published.
It's manageable. It's not too long. I think if you read it, you'll get a sense of how it's all going to work. We've slaved over it for years.
And, you know, frankly, we're, I think, we've gone over the tipping point of being a victim of our own success. We can't even, locals can't get parking downtown on the weekends. I don't know that we, there are more hotels coming into the area. You know, locals don't shop at our shops. Weekenders do. Day trippers do. We think it's important to preserve our housing stock for residents, not for weekends.
I agree, but there are ways to do that by someone said, you know, create caps or a lottery system or other things. Why not? Other towns have been successful across the country. Some towns have been very successful in doing that. And if the locals are shopping at Amazon and not locally, that's a concern also. Like you said, who's going into the gift shops and supporting them? It's the weekenders, right?
The real estate in the village of Reinbeck is the most expensive real estate in the county, followed by the town. It's important to protect our housing stock, in my point of view.
Yeah, I hear you.
I don't, you know, we get 20 calls a week. "Hi, I live in New York City. I'm thinking about buying a house in Reinbeck, and I want to rent it out for Airbnb." I don't see how that's healthy for our community.
So another option, then, is also grandfathering people who have...
It's illegal now, so you can't give, it's illegal. If you're renting out of short term, you're breaking the law.
I thought it was only illegal in the village.
No, it's not in our used table. It is not allowed in the town. If you're currently doing it, you're breaking the law. So there's no pre-existing allowance for something that isn't allowed.
Got it.
Thanks. Anybody else? I see a lot of other people here. Sarah?
Hi, Craig Olshewski, Tennessee Moore Drive. And because the short-term rentals are illegal now, is there any forfeit or penalty that's associated with that? And is that likely to change with the adoption of this law?
There's currently no penalty, and there will be a penalty. And the penalties are published in this local law. I believe it's 750, 2,500, and 5,000, and an attendant jail term if you're caught.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes.
I just have a general question. How do you understand the details of the items in the budget? If I have a question about the specific...
It's published.
So I see the budget, and I see an item on the budget, and I want to know exactly more details about that.
Okay. Okay.
So how would I find that out?
You could call me. You could email me, or you could email my bookkeeper.
Okay.
We're here Monday through Friday, happy to talk about any money in our budget.
Thank you.
Often, money gets, except for salaries, money does get transferred on the nation. We published two budgets this year, one with a lot more detail and one combining lines so that we would do less transfers, but both are available to the public.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing nothing, I'll make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Okay.
Good night, everybody. We'll see you August 25th. Thank you for coming.
Okay.